Let's come to order. The pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Tim Teck.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, Harry, you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah, actually, Blackman High School, you may have read on our webpage, you may have heard otherwise, has been recognized as a, as part of High School Work Network, as a pace setter award winner. And there's a deadline by which the board could recommend them to TSBA to win a subsequent award, a quarterly award, I believe, statewide award, and we want to, we want the board hopefully to pass on that tonight so that we can send it off and they'd be eligible for that award. Don, add to anything you want. Does that pretty much sum it up? Sure. Is that okay, Doc?
Sure. Once a quarter, you can recommend a, an instructional program or some type of program in our schools for the award. The problem is that we didn't, we didn't get this till later, and it has to be in by the 13th of October, and you do not have another board meeting before that time. What this is, is a, is a marketing class, is under entrepreneurship one and two. You're familiar with the virtual enterprise system where it's not real items or something like that. It's virtual, you know. Under marketing here and under DECA, these are actual, they have actually started a business. And it's really interesting if you read this, what they, they've got a Segal Foundation Award, that sort of thing, and there's about 200 students that's in marketing at Blackman High School. So you're approaching 10% of the school's population that's involved in that. And last year, they sent a little summary. Last year, 12 students placed in the top 20 nationally. Eleven of those from entrepreneurship class. Of these students, six placed in the top 10. Two students placed second in the nation for their event. So they're well-known for what they do in this area. So it's called Sketch It Up, and it's a business that they started to do things really for, for schools a lot. They can make banners, they can make trophies for schools, they can make other things for you. So Gail Vick says they're making her banner. They purchased some equipment and all for some honors program. Kay Davenport, which is one of the Wests, has ordered some things for them to do that. So if you kind of read through it all, they did, as buying their furniture, after they got their grant, they got a Segal grant and some, they actually went to yard sales and bought their furniture and all. Ms. Vick said those kids worked just about all summer long putting this together. So it's really interesting. The Chamber of Commerce is going to do a ribbon cutting for them and all. So they have turned a profit so far of $1,356, so that's not bad for what they've done. So I hope you'll look at this. If you'd like to recommend them as your nomination for this quarter, then we'd be glad to submit it.
Thank you, Don, for that. Harry, what do you want to add that? How about right after visitors?
That'd be fresh in our mind.
Yes, sir. Anything else on the agenda? If not, a motion would be very nice right now. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on approving the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion's adopted. Approval of the consent agenda. So moved.
Sure.
Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion's adopted. Visitors. Joyce, I don't see any forms, so we have no visitors. So now, a motion on recommending the program that Mr. Odom just discussed.
So moved.
Sure.
Any discussion?
I, I just think it's worthy to say that there are so many programs out there. We're highly aware, all of us teachers, and I know people at times, they don't feel the recognition. So anytime we can give that recognition, we need to do that. Terrific programs in our schools, and they, they need that recognition and terrific teachers. And the support that we can give them is, is, we should do everything we can. I'm wholeheartedly for this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So all in favor of recommending this program, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion's adopted. Number seven.
We have a recognition tonight, and I'd ask, first of all, recognizing Master Sergeant, retired Jim Thurston, Army Instructor, Segal High School, and he won the Cadet Command Silver Teacher Award by Colonel Houchins. And Colonel Houchins, if you'd step to the podium, please.
Well, thank you, sir, and I appreciate the opportunity to, again, to honor one of our junior ROTC instructors within Rutherford County. Master Sergeant Thurston, along with his Ranger side, his adult leadership, Colonel, well, vice versa, really, Colonel Chaff, and they're both, they started out at Oakland High School. They replaced me, and then they opened, assisted in starting the program at Segal High School. So both instructors, their team effort, they've been together for, I guess, how long?
Twelve years.
No, before that, probably about. Sixteen years. So they know each other well. They make an outstanding, exceptional team. And they do a great job at Segal High School. And they currently have a cadet battalion of 140. 142 cadets, and they do a great job. Tonight, we're here to honor Master Sergeant James R. Thurston with the Cadet Command, Department of the Army, Silver Instructor Award. And he's done an exceptional job as a teacher, but also as a coach. As you know, last year, his Segal marksmanship team, precision team, won the national championship in ROTC. That's all junior ROTC programs in the nation, to include, well, Army, Navy, Marine, and Air Force. And his team came in number one. So at this time, I would like to honor Master Sergeant James R. Thurston for the exceptional job he did as a marksmanship team coach and also as an instructor. So, Mr. Gill, would you be kind to present this to him? There you go, sir.
Thank you. Congratulations. Appreciate your service, and obviously, congratulations on that championship.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. We love championships, really. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Colonel. Ready for number eight.
Facilities. John Coleman Elementary School Walking Track. Dr. Phillips, Principal John Coleman, has requested permission to construct a walking track at the school. Track is approximately six feet wide by 275 feet long, in an oval shape on the northeast corner of the school site. Cost is approximately $5,000 and will be done by Sessions Paving, who is currently on contract with Rutherford County Board of Education through the purchasing department. Funds for the project are coming from a grant through Lowe's Toolbox for Education, and recommend that you approve construction of a walking track at John Coleman Elementary School that is approximately six feet by 275 feet long, and funded through a grant from Lowe's Toolbox for Education, no cost to the board.
So moved.
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion's adopted. Number nine.
Transportation. Per Section 8 of the bus contract, which covers the signability of a contract from the contract holder to another individual. The Transportation Department has received a request dated September the 17th, 2010, from Thurman Williams, contractor of buses 32 and 33, and Mary Susan Eubank, who has power of attorney for Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams and Ms. Eubank are requesting buses 32 and 33 be transferred or signed to Dan Hartley, Senior. Mr. Hartley is currently a contractor for Rutherford County Schools, provides bus maintenance, and is a co-signer on the bank loans for the buses 32 and 33. Mr. Williams has been a bus provider for Rutherford County Schools for 56 years, was no longer able to maintain these bus contracts due to health issues. Letter from Mr. Williams requesting the bus contract be transferred to Mr. Hartley is provided, and we recommend that you approve the contract for buses 32 and 33 be transferred from Thurman Williams to Dan Hartley.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess, actually directed to Mr. Gill. With this length of service, is there something that we can do to commemorate his service to the children and the citizens of this county?
I'm sure there is. We, yeah, let, let me think that through. As we mentioned the other night, I think, I know Mr. Donalds already knew Mr. Thurman Williams. Many of us did. He was good, I mean, he is a good man. It's sad to see that he's hanging up his driving shoes, so to speak, because he's a fine man. But at any rate, I'll pursue that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. That's a good suggestion. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion's adopted. Number 10. That's our, yeah, sorry. It's our annual policy manual review. Angel, do you, you have, I know you have a couple of things, right? Do you have those, do you, the, about the nepotism and there's a couple of? Okay. That'll go directly to the, the Policy Committee. Any board? I want to ask you if you all did your homework. But.
I would say yes, as long as you don't give a test.
I'm gonna take a paper, so.
I'd say we possibly have post-traumatic syndrome from doing this the last time, so. Going through each sentence at a time, but, you know, with that nepotism, I think we have an ambiguity with, with a 5.101. I don't remember, so will that be addressed at the same time? Okay, thank you.
And also the issue of do we need to specify additional family relationships? That was another one.
Yes, sir.
I don't see any need for us to go through one by one on these policies. If you haven't done your homework yet, don't admit it right now, but you still have time. I mean, we don't have to vote on anything tonight. And if I wanted to be completely candid, I didn't finish reading them myself. So I can't be too strict on the rest of you. But I will, and I ask you, over the next week or so, if you have time to do that, just send to Angel any topics that you think we need to address. Because there isn't any, any further action I don't think we need to take there. This is more of a reminder to us and to try to keep this on schedule for this review. Any questions on that process? Okay, number 11.
Explore joint meetings of the Rutherford County Board of Education and Murfreesboro City Board of Education. The Rutherford County Board of Education will contact Murfreesboro City Board of Education for the purpose of setting a regular meeting schedule proposed quarterly, including members and proposing two on both boards. It is extremely important that both boards recognize that we share many common goals and serve many of the same students and families. The joint meeting will allow the sharing of ideas and plans from both boards that would allow us to better serve our students. The Joint Committee would have no voting power and no ability to commit either board to any decisions made. And we're recommending that we explore the possibility of a joint committee meeting between Rutherford County Board of Education and the Murfreesboro City Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr.
I was gonna say, we talked about in the work session, you know, specifically designating that the chairman of the school board be charged with making this contact. I feel sufficient that, you know, enough has been said about that, that it doesn't need to be amended.
I'd be glad to do that, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we need a formal amendment to do that.
That's the point I was gonna make, exactly what Mr. Holliday.
Okay. I will talk with Ms. Wade and, and report back to you. See what, what level of interest they have in doing that. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion's adopted. Number 12.
You want to handle it?
Yeah, board member appointments to the Tennessee Legislative Network, the TLN, and the Federal Relations Network. These are both TSBA, NSBA positions that Mr. Blair has handled for us in the past. He is, would like to do it again, but. Okay, thank you. Sort of hit a roadblock there. But we need to do something to make that happen. I think that was the rest of my sentence. Thank you. Is there a second?
Needs to make it more attractive where somebody will kind of give you some competition.
And a second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say no. Motion's adopted. Thank you, Wayne. And so you'll be reporting to us throughout the year as events take place. Anybody who's interested can sign up for the email news loader that comes out during the legislative session from TSBA. And that's actually pretty interesting that, as they track, really, day by day, the important bills that affect public education.
Thank you, Chairman.
Wayne, no, thank you for being willing to take that on. 13 is our, the list of our Policy Committee members. For information. 14, general discussion. Let me lead off by asking Mr. Gill and probably Mr. Reed to address the, the, the arrest of our teachers here in the last week. It's caused considerable discussion around the community and in the papers. So can you brief us on where we are, what our options are, and what we can and can't do?
Obviously, it's, we've, we've all either seen it on television, heard about it, read it in the paper, that there was a, an arrest of a teacher, and apparently there was a weapon firearm in, in, in the car, and there have been charges brought. We're, with respect to our options, I'm gonna ask Jeff Reed to stop, step up, who's one of our two attorneys that I've conferred with on this deal. I want to say, before, before I defer to you, Jeff, I mean, we've taken this seriously. It troubles me, one, that it, that it happened, and secondly, that I feel limited with respect to what we can do at this juncture. Person's been charged with, with something, tenured teacher, and as, as we've had ongoing conversations for three straight days, we still struggle, struggle with our options. But anyway, that said, would you say, would you kind of reference it, Jeff?
Sure, and Mr. Gill and, and myself and Angel McLeod have discussed the matter on multiple occasions over the last couple of days, because the matter has been, obviously, a matter of the system is viewed very seriously and appropriately so. Even though this matter occurred outside of school property, really was not a school-related incident in any way, you know, despite that, we think it reflects on the system and is a matter of major concern to, to the school system that we have to attend to and, and address. So it is a very serious matter, which the staff here has viewed very seriously and continues to look into, and we continue to investigate it with respect to the facts that gave rise to allegations that have been made. There have been, there has been no criminal conviction yet in the case, so there are still charges at this point. We have reviewed the court file. We know what the allegations were in the court file. We have seen those. This teacher does have tenure, so with respect to tenure, that affords teachers certain rights and limits the school system to some extent about what action we can take with respect to tenured teachers. So, but we are still carefully looking at those options and looking at things that should or should not be done with respect to this particular employee. Again, I guess everyone is entitled to the day in court. This particular individual has not yet been convicted. He has been charged, and we will continue to monitor that and look at it. But right now, the school system is not, we've not taken any action, making, if I made any final determination about what to do or not to do with respect to the matter.
Jeff, could you expand on the difference in, in our options, if there happens to be a conviction of a misdemeanor versus a felony?
If a tenured teacher is convicted of a felony, that is a grounds for dismissal under the Tennessee tenure law. So if a teacher is convicted of a misdemeanor, that is not grounds under Tennessee tenure law to dismiss a teacher. So we don't know how that's going to shake out in court, so ultimately, we don't know if this, if the teacher involved will be convicted of a felony or misdemeanor at this point. The charges are felony in nature, but you don't know ultimately what the outcome will be in court.
So generically speaking, if, if a teacher perpetuates a misdemeanor, you suspend him or her with or without pay, say, without pay, and they're found guilty of a misdemeanor and they're a tenured teacher, in all likelihood, they would be placed back in their position and we'd make reimbursement.
Just speaking generically, if you were, if you did, if there's a generic situation where you suspended a teacher without pay, and that teacher later on was reinstated to that position and not found to be guilty of a felony in the, in the criminal trial, then the school system very well could be liable to pay the salary that that teacher would have earned had they been work, working during that time. So while you can suspend a teacher without pay, it may come back, and in the end, it could result in the system having a paid salary during that time the teacher is out. And, you know, in today's world, it's a very litigious world, so in the event you had any kind of employment-type suits, you could be facing some attorney's fees and things like that on top of what salary obligations you have to pay back. So that's, just all goes into weighing the analysis of what the system should or should not do with respect to employee when you have these type of charges filed against them. For instance, that occur off school property and not, or are not directly school-related.
Jeff, going down, again, leaving this individual case aside, in the future, it sounds like there's not much we could do as a system to put ourselves in a position to have more options in similar cases. Is that correct? I mean, it's a state legislature?
Well, it goes all to tenure law largely, because there's a state legal, there's state legislation that affords teachers certain right, who have, rights who have tenure. And even teachers without tenure have certain rights as well. But obviously, there's a lot of discuss, discussion here nationally now about the tenure law in general and the pluses and minuses of the tenure system. And I think that's part, one of the element that goes, well, one of the elements that goes into that debate, how you handle these type of disciplinary type matters with teachers, for instance, that occur off school property and off school time. So that's, you know, but you are correct, it's a state legislative matter.
Okay. Questions or concerns from the board?
TSBA, at our annual convention, we make resolutions to take to the legislature, and this may be something that the board might want to look at and send to the SBA.
It's not a bad idea. I mean, it would be nice for us to have a little more flexibility, because basically, the bottom line is, there's not much we can do. That's what I'm hearing, anyway, in this situation, primarily because of the state law. Tim.
I, I think that folks within that school, and I'm sure students and parents within those classrooms just want some assurance that, that the school day and, and the classroom situation has not been negatively so disruptive. I, I know that I've emailed Sandra Eaton. I have a lot of confidence that she'll monitor that and, and just ask her to do that very thing, and at a point in time, then it becomes such a disruption that, that the classroom situations or the school is being negatively impacted by that. I think it, you know, I, I, I think at some point in time, an action needs to be taken. I get a sense that, that right now, the school seems to be functioning in a, in a normal fashion, and the classrooms are doing that, and I, I think that's the, the hope that we have, that, that is in fact taking place.
I would say, again, I'm gonna kind of reiterate what Dr. Burns said. I mean, we're limited in our options is, is the problem. I mean, for example, generically speaking, if someone perpetuates an action which they're charged with, I mean, is it, you know, I've, I've kind of been approached about transferring. I mean, is it any more fair for, to transfer a person into another school? And if they were there, or left in that school, if we can't suspend and we can't, can't take any other action, so, you know, I didn't feel good about moving, moving them into any, any other school. Because, I mean, they're kids there, and I value those kids, and I'm sure you do, as much as we do the Oakland Middle School kids. But we feel, I'll leave it at that. We just feel that we're so limited with respect to our options in this situation.
Well, it is a serious matter, and staff, I'm sure the board, the staff's very closely monitoring this situation and will continue to do so on a daily basis to make sure there's no problems in the system and in school level arising from this.
Don. We might not see it at, at the school, but when something like this occurs, you have a problem. These people are teachers, and they're teachers 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. They never get away from it. We talk about high expectations for our system and for our students. You know, this, this doesn't meet that, and not even close. So we, we've got a pro, and it's a problem in that classroom with a lot of those kids, because it's talked about at home, talked about other places. I don't think we can operate a school system very effectively for very long if we operate afraid of lawsuits. So I think, you know, we need to weigh this situation, and I'm sure you have very carefully and, and looked at options. But a lot of those are just simply recommendations. Am I correct?
I'm sorry, what are recommendations?
Well, on how to take care of a situation like this. Dismissal is a recommendation, but not a requirement. Is that correct? And suspension would be, could be, I don't recommend this because we could have to pay attorney fees later. Is that?
Yeah, the superintendent, the director of schools does have authority to make recommendations with respect to terminating tenured teachers.
So therefore, sometimes I, you know, I don't, I'm glad I'm not in that meeting with you and Mr. Gill, but I, I know if my grandchild was in that classroom, it would be a problem. And I'd be looking for someone to address that problem. And the correct way to do it, I'm not, I'm not sure. But there has to be a way to take care of this situation. Surely, the state legislative body hasn't locked us into a situation where we cannot address episodes like this. And I'm sure Rutherford County is just one of many systems that's faced with this. It's not just Rutherford County. It's happened anywhere. I'd like to see, I'd like to see, Mr. Gill was talking about transferring. Can you transfer someone, since he's a certified teacher, it would have, his transfer would have to be to a certified position?
You would typically transfer a certified employee to a certified position.
Typically. But not necessarily a requirement.
Well, we've talked about that. We've discussed kind of various options in that regard. So those are things that we are continuing to look at. So final determination has not been made with respect to what's going to be appropriate to handle, how to handle this matter and, and take care of it. We do want to do it correctly and do it in a manner that ensures the safety for most of all the students at the school, and make sure there's no disruption at the school level.
And you know, the, the safety of the students' schools is extremely important. Perception of safety of students is extremely important. That's why the SRO program became such a. such a vital part of the school system and law enforcement in this county. I, I just, I stopped there, but, and, and I know that's, Mr. Gill, everyone's in a difficult situation with this, so, and I, and I appreciate the position you're in.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate it. I, I kind of, I view it like you, and I understand where you're coming from. We, you know, Lord knows you can't sit in this seat and be afraid of lawsuits, because we get our fair share of them. But when you anticipate that the outcome is, they're a tenured teacher, and they go to court two or three weeks, they're gonna be right back in the school anyway, because of the likelihood of the outcome of the, of, of the court case, you know, I don't know how effective a suspension would be, especially if it opens us up to subsequent litigation, because we suspended him without him having been convicted of anything, and it's just a tough call. I mean, I've, I've kind of wavered on it. I know what I wanted to do, I know what I'd like to do, but currently we're, where we are.
Terry.
I'll just make a comment, just general comment back to what Mr. Blair was saying about T S B A. I would, if Mr. Reed knows of something that, that he feels like ought to be changed on a state level, I'm sure Wayne has to, has to have something pretty quick or whatever to take down there. I would, I'd be in favor of letting you go forth with it. The way I look at this whole situation, from your standpoint, as a board member, you want, you represent me, so I, I trust what you send to Wayne to the state is gonna be in my best interest. So, you know, like I said, any changes you know of, I, I would recommend going ahead and going forth with it.
And we can certainly put something together and present that to Wayne, present on to T S B A.
You know, last year, I don't wanna call it the Wayne Blair Law, but, you know, Wayne carried the recommendation to change the notification date, and that was in fact enacted, so not predicting success necessarily in this case, but on the other hand, I think they do, they look at that, if the, the T S B A gets behind something, it gets attention down there.
Is there anything that we can say without crossing lines of confidentiality about this particular teacher and their past track record or their employee file, is this incident in any way increased in its impact because of anything lingering, or is this really an exception that we can offer to the community that otherwise we see a, a quality?
I don't, I mean, there's nothing that would factor into it.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to bring forward was, you know, this situation reminds me of, I was riding with a school employee not long ago, and as we went from place to place, they explained to me that even though they did have a legal gun carry permit, they never took their weapon onto school property, even as a, you know, a licensed carrier and everything, and a daily employee at that school, that, that was not permitted. And so, you know, an extra emphasis and reminder, you know, to any of our employees out there that even though it may never come up, we certainly can't have anything like that.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I, I just like to, to, to add, I mean, it, it's just unfortunate for all concerned. I mean, it, it does bring a, a, a bad light to education in general, to the, how many teachers do we have? Twenty-eight hundred, to the twenty-eight hundred teachers that in our system that by and large are doing a great job. You know, my son-in-law and daughter are both teachers, and I'm very proud that they are. And, you know, these kinds of things bring into the community factors, and it, it, when you've been a leadership position of a school or a school system and so forth, sometimes you get very frustrated about what you can and what you can't do, and, and I hope the community would recognize that, that we do have the best interest of, of the students at heart, we truly do. But we do work in a, in a great country of laws that require us to do some things sometimes that, that might not be as prudent as we'd love to be able to do, but we do have to work within those laws, I believe.
Okay, other topics of discussion?
Are we, are we switch shifting gears?
Yeah, anything else? Any other general topics?
I, I had an opportunity last Thursday, I believe it was, to, to visit Kenny Nolan, and the Segal High School principal there, went through his building and just had a chance to do some things, and he's very proud of the fact that there's several students in, in our school system that are National Merit Scholarship finalists, and he just wanted me to highlight that, because six of those do come from Segal High School, but there's others in our system. If I could read those names, I would, I'd be proud to do so, because it is quite an honor for people to be honored in, in such a way. At Eagleville High School, it's Sidney Cromwell. At Blackman High School, Laura Abell. At Segal High School, Brian Allen, Jessica Bowles, Sarah Dawes, Emily Ducock, I guess that is, Hannah Kim, and Ryan Nichols. I apologize for the mispronunciation. I also wanted to point out, me to point out that there were six at Segal. Schools like Ensworth High School have two, Brentwood High School with five, some schools that, that are across the state that have great renown as well. So I know when we were at Oakland, it was something, it was, it was a proud day when we saw National Merit Scholarship finalists brought to our attention, so I just want to bring that to the attention that we do have some outstanding students taking place, and congratulations to those teachers, to those schools and those students, parents as well.
Thank you, Tim. Sometimes, don't we have those?
We, we have very spotlights.
Yeah.
Where we're recognized, and I think we recognized National Merit last year, too, but like you say, it's, it's a tremendous honor for those kids.
Okay, other discussion?
Just right out of the gate here, as a new school board member, it's been a great month, and a lot of people have contacted me and welcomed me. I, y'all didn't tell me that I'd get the perk of being able to be a judge of the Halloween costumes at Roy Waldron Elementary, so I'm looking forward to that opportunity, and I just wanted to thank all the different faculty members who have contacted me. I, I've heard from so many, particularly from Laverne High School, it's just been great.
Good. Aaron, there's a lot we haven't told you about being born.
I also enjoy Mr. Holliday and Mr. Tackett coming on board. I'm no longer the rookie, so that, that, I like that status, too.
Yeah, Aaron.
On a positive note, I think everyone knows we got a five-two vote to proceed with the design for new Stewart's Creek High School, and we, we're back at it Thursday night with budget, so you, you're invited to attend if, you know, if, if you can, if not, we'll, we'll hunker down and do our best.
I, I was remiss in not asking you about that. I appreciate that report. I actually saw a replay of it one day, most of it, and you all did a very nice job representing us, so appreciate that. And so keep up the talk with the county commissioners. All right, with that, we are adjourned.